Barbara Passaro, Precinct 3.
Can you go to the microphone?
Barbara Passaro, Precinct 3. Do we, by law, what were we supposed to have? Were, are we allowed to have only a part-time person? Or should we have a full-time person by law? Because if we're supposed to have a full-time person and we only get a part-time person, I mean, if there's some kind of natural disaster of any kind or...
Ms. Moultrip will answer your question.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, Donna Moultrip, the Director of the Health Department. We are not required to have a specific number of hours for our nursing position. That's part of the issue with public health nursing across the state is how many hours does each town need. I have said that I believe the town of Belmont could do very well with a half-time nurse, given our other staffing members. Now, the Public Health Nurses Association of the State really hates that statement because they believe every town ought to have one. However, as you well know, we have 351 cities and towns in this state, and some of these towns have less than 1,000 people. I would suggest they do not need a full-time nurse. And so what we have tried to do is to come up with some models. And what we were waiting for is one of the towns to have a position open that would correspond with what we needed. And so Lexington's position was a 30-hour position, and essentially what I did was ask them to make it a full-time position. So they went to 35 hours, and we're going to share it, so that they're getting less public health nursing hours, and we're getting slightly more. We have a position of 10 hours, and we have not been able to fill that. Occasionally, you'll have someone. We had a nurse for five years. We were very fortunate. You have a person that that job fits perfectly, and there was no benefits. We have not been able to attract anyone since then, since I'm a nurse. I've been doing the nursing work. We do need a nurse. In an emergency, we will need a lot more nursing than a halftime or the 14 hours that we're going to have, which is one of the reasons that we have a regional agreement now, a memorandum of understanding with the 26 other communities in Region 4B, our Emergency Planning Region. So right now, we have over 2,000 people in the Medical Reserve Corps that could possibly come to our aid if we needed it. All health departments know that we cannot be staffed for the emergencies that we're anticipating, so we are trying to reach out and help each other. And I think this particular situation where we'll have 14 hours of nursing time, they will have 21 hours of nursing time, but the real beauty of it is if Belmont has an emergency or Lexington has an emergency, that person will go to the site of the emergency first.
But isn't it a regional emergency that could happen?
A regional emergency could happen, yes, absolutely. And then we will, then we will be using the services of the Medical Reserve Corps.
Is that going to be adequate if there's a regional emergency?
It's going to be the best we can do.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Joe White, Precinct 4. You say that they have a 35. Who's going to employ this person?
This person will be an employee of Lexington, and I would remind Town Meeting, when we shared the Animal Control Officer with Watertown, the Animal Control Officer was the employee of Belmont, and we shared that person with Watertown. In this particular case, they will be an employee of Lexington because they will have more hours, and we will share with them.
And how would that be billed? My question gets to health insurance. They're going to be insured by their health program.
They will be an employee of Lexington. They will have all the benefits provided by the town of Lexington, and Belmont will pay a proportional share.
And so they would be sort of a contract labor for us. Their employment would stay Lexington, and we would pay a bill that comes from Lexington.
That is correct. That is correct. We have an agreement that Town Council is reviewing right now that will be signed by the Board of Health.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do you want to come to the microphone? Mr. Plunkett?
Robert Plunkett, Precinct 5. Through you, Mr. Moderator, may I ask of the Speaker if we could get an under-update on the pandemic situation which we have in Belmont? I think they did have some past meetings at the Belmont Hill School, if you know anything about that.
If you're referring to our exercise where we use the flu clinic as an emergency dispensing site?
Is this ongoing?
This is ongoing, absolutely. Right now, Belmont's participating in a Battle Road Regional Emergency Planning Committee that's mainly through police and fire, but also has health and general government. We have the Emergency Planning Committee, which is town departments, that are working on all the various emergency plans for the town. The Health Department is part of Region 4B, which is the public health aspect of that. Absolutely. That emergency planning is going to be now into forever.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Donna. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Passed. It's approved unanimously. At this point, I think I saw Representative Brownsberger. Is he here? Yes, so I would call on, with the moderator's discretion here, call on Rudy Montoya to read
Rudy Montoya, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. Move that the reports of selectmen and the other town officials, departments, and committees for the years 2007 be accepted.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Will Brownsberger, Town Meeting Member at Large. I'll be very brief because I'm sure you have a, have the momentum going here, and I don't want to diminish that. The first thing I want to do is I have in my hands a resolution of the House of Representatives honoring Henry Hall and his service. And what I want to do is just transmit that to the clerk at this time, because I know you'll, you'll, you'll read that and have that when, on Wednesday, I believe.
Yes, we will be doing that.
I'll say in Henry's absence, because I'm unlikely to be here on Wednesday, that his service goes far beyond what, what, what was visible. He put his hand on issues in a quiet way when he needed to and brought an enormous amount of expertise and commitment to, to the service of the town. And I can think of a number of places in my tenure as selectman where, where he sort of, hey, by the way, Will, you might want to know this, which was very important. So I'm very grateful to, to him. My aide, whom you all know, Barbara, Miranda, and I are working on a lot of things for this community, and we, we have a wonderful partnership going with the members of the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee and the members of the administration. And I'd like to say that it's a, from the standpoint of the state rep, you start to get to, you get to hear what's going on in other towns in a way that you don't just by, you don't read newspapers from other towns, but you sort of get to hear the other towns' gossip. And I have to tell you, you, members of Town Meeting, Board of Selectmen, this, this is a wonderful town in terms of the way things work here. Even when we're frustrated, the, the quality of what goes on here is very, very, very good. And it's, it's been great for me to be associated with it and to continue to be associated with it. The projects that we have working, I won't go through details, but everything from Tarpella Road to the issue of flooding, there's a lot of good things we're working on closely. I know you're all very interested in the issue of local aid. The local aid this year is relatively good for Belmont, and that really reflects an arrangement, as I mentioned last year, that was negotiated by my predecessor, Ann Paulson, and other suburban representatives, that commits the legislature to providing five years of steady growth to communities like Belmont who have relatively low education aid. And however, the lottery aid, the other components of, of our major component of our aid are likely to be flat at best over the next couple of years. But I do think it's, unless revenue really falls out of bed, which is entirely possible, the, the town is likely to see growth rates in local aid that are a bit above inflation for the next couple of years. So that's the good news. As state representative, I get more and more interested in issues of economic development on a statewide basis, and I kind of tie those together because, because of the question of where's, where's the money going to come from. And I tie that to the issue of climate change, what I talked about a little bit last year, which is, they come together in the issue of how do communities choose to grow? And this community has done something very smart in, in the Cushing Square rezoning in thinking about what it wants, where it's willing to tolerate additional levels of density. And that kind of forward-thinking about saying, where will we do smart growth? Where will we welcome businesses is a sub, is a kind of thinking that I think is very important, and that's a, and we need to, we've seen it in Cushing Square. We need to do it on down Tarpella Road. We need to do it in Belmont Center. We need to do it on Pleasant Street. And we need, at the same time, to protect our valuable open spaces like the Silver Maple Forest and like, like the, the great amount that we were able to protect at McLean. So I'm looking forward to working with the planning board on thinking about how to, the state can better support intelligent, smart growth approaches. I will stop here. I want to say that my website, willbrownsberger.com, we've, we're continuing to put more and more out there in terms of what we've been working on and, you know, what some of the issues are that we're facing in the state. And so it's a resource that I hope will, will be useful to you as you think about some of these issues. And I also want to say, as always, that I'm really, really eager to hear from all of you anytime. My cell phone's there on the website, my email's there on the website. And I believe, as your representative, the way I do my job best is if I'm hearing a lot from you and if I'm also putting out quite a bit there that you can react to, so I really know what you're thinking, I know what the needs are, and I can be the best possible representative. I, I thank you all for letting me interrupt the flow of Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brownsberger.
Rudy Montoya, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 8. Move that Article 1 be laid on the table.
Is there any discussion? Requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's approved unanimously. Now Article 15.
Helen Casaraba, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. Moved that under Article 15, the reading of the proposed amendments to Article 20, public safety and property of the general bylaws of the town be dispensed with, the same being set forth in full under Article 15 and the warrant for this meeting and having been distributed to each Town Meeting Member. Moved that the town...
Let me, let me just stop there. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Passed. Approved unanimously. Go ahead, Helen.
Moved that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town in Article 20, public safety and property, as set forth in full under Article 15 and the warrant for this meeting.
Thank you. The Bylaw Review Committee, Mr. Hammon?
Mr. Moderator, Charles Hammon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1, Chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. The Bylaw Review Committee has approved the amendments made by this article in form and in placement in the general bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Castanino, Director of Public Works. Just a brief overview and some background for this article. Article 15 was proposed as part of a process to improve the town's ability to protect our investment in the town's public ways. Public way is the town-owned property between private property, which includes the street, tree lawn, or the roadway shoulder and the sidewalk. The revised bylaw, bylaw will give the Board of Selectmen the authority to regulate and issue street opening permits. These permits include control and oversight of utility openings, curb cuts or driveway openings into the roadway, the occupation of public ways, and to prevent and repair damage to streets and sidewalks by utilities and contractors. In addition, the bylaw change will incorporate a new state regulation beginning on January 1, 2009, called Chapter 82A, which requires that anyone excavating a trench deeper than three feet on public or private property be required to obtain a trench permit from their local city and town. The proposed revised bylaw was drafted by Town Council and, as just mentioned, reviewed and revised by the Bylaw Review Committee. The DPW is in the process of creating comprehensive regulations along with an inspection program to bring before the Board of Selectmen for the approval if this bylaw passes. Thank you for the opportunity to present this article.
Thank you. Discussion. Ms. Semuels?
Mr. Moderator, Joel Semuels, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I have two brief questions. One, what would a trench opening permit cost to a utility, I would assume? And second, what's the definition of acceptable conditions that the road has to be returned to? Is that just a patch of some kind, or does it have to be paved up to a certain standard? Thank you.
You're welcome. The, um, the permit trench, the current cost for a permit is zero. We look forward to charging for those in the near future. We haven't established that yet. I would expect something in, in the way of $100 for a utility permit, $50 for a trench permit. Acceptable is an interesting question. There are some regulations that utilities are guided by state regulations, which oversee any, oversee anything the town can, can initiate, which says that they will return the trench, the street into the condition as it exists, as good as, as good as it exists, which in Belmont is a bit of a low standard, I'm afraid. That said, that said, we seek to hold that. One of the, one of the reasons for this new process is to have an inspection process so we can get the best that we can from utilities and contractors so the roads are repaired well.
Gentleman on my left?
Vincent Stanton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. So this would require a permit to dig a trench, you mentioned deeper than three feet on private property. In looking at item 20.7 on page 12, I don't see there any mention of the three-feet definition. It just says, "No person shall excavate a trench on any private land for any purpose without first obtaining a written permit from the Board of Selectmen or its designated agent." Perhaps the definitions are someplace else, so it's understood that a trench means a trench deeper than three feet, but otherwise, you know, even relatively digging a bed could be considered to, to require this kind of permit?
Sure.
Please.
Two items. One is that you'll notice in that section, section, proposed section 20.7, they reference Chapter 82, Section 40 through 40D and Chapter 82A. Chapter 82A is the new trench provision requirement by the state, and it does a couple of things. Number one, it says that if you do gardening with hand tools, they're exempt.
I see.
And the three feet and other requirements are in that chapter, which is why I think Town Council, although I can't speak for them, of course, included those in the article. There are definitions, there are specific, specific requirements within the article, the regular state regulation.
But the regulation actually pertains to using power, digging...
No, not totally. What I said is it exempts gardening by hand tools. If you were to dig a hole in your backyard deeper than three feet with a shovel, you would require to be, have a permit.
Permit, okay.
That's, that's a new regulation as of, as I said, January 1 of 2009.
Is, is that based on, you, you introduced your remarks by saying that this would enable the town to protect its investment in the public ways. Are there actually instances of people digging trenches on their private land that have incurred significant costs for the town?
No. As I said, this, this covers, I mentioned several things. One of those is a trench permit. The other one is the street excavation bylaw, which is, we're talking about the public way, trenches on the public way, which is between, you know, street sidewalk, that area. No. This, this, without going into a long history, this article was actually, there was, sadly, there was a young girl in Bridgewater in 1999. A contractor left a trench open in her backyard. She went in the trench it caved in, and she, she passed away unfortunately. This article requires anybody to take out a trench permit, and on private property, the town has no duty to inspect unless we are called. If we are called, we have a duty to protect the trench until the excavator makes it safe. The idea is that any open trenches will be made safe by covering it, by putting a fence around it, not leaving an open, undetended trench. That is the thrust of the statute.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Suzanne Blor, Precinct 5. I have a question about Section 1, 20.4. And I'm not sure what the intent of that is, because if I walk up Common Street, a lot of those hedges are all over the sidewalk. What...
20.4 is an existing bylaw.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Jennifer Page, Precinct 3. My question is very much like Mrs. Blor's. I guess that I'm confused by what we're being given here. Are we being given exist, existing bylaw language for points, points numbers one and two, and then the new part is three? Or, because I've got some questions about, about what's in one and two, but then you're saying, well, that's already existing bylaw. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Castanino?
I'm saying the way it's presented, there are two pieces that are existing. This was, this was blended into an, some exist, an existing bylaw.
Uh-huh. Well, I have to say, it's, it's nice to know how new language fits into the old language. Sometimes we only see the new language in a, kind of in a, in a vacuum. On the other hand, it would be helpful to understand how much of all of this language that's in italics is, is what we're actually trying to change.
I think I can pretty easily explain that.
Uh-huh. Good.
I hope, because I actually had to make it out myself and say what was existing and what was new.
Okay.
20.4, which is in the very beginning of the article, is existing. The rest on that, 20.4.1 is new. 20.4.2 is existing. 24.20.5 is existing. 20.5.1 is new. 20.5.2 is existing. 20.7, 20.7.1, 20.7.2 are new. And you'll notice that all of the new sections refer to, I hope, the things that I mentioned earlier. And the final number four, Section 20.13, is new in the sense that the fine is raised from 50 to $300 for those mentioned sections. I hope that helps.
Could you say that money piece again? What did you say, substituting 300 for $50?
That's correct. And you'll notice on number four in the first line, it mentions that. Substitutes $300 for $50 as the penalty for each fence for some items within that section. I hope I made it better and not worse.
No, I think you made it better. Thank you. Well, in that case, may I ask a question about some of the new language here?
Go ahead.
I, I was a little perplexed. What you said, Mr. Castanino, was actually very helpful to me to see this, this mix because it was confusing to me to see the summary pertaining really only, only to the, to the trenches. And although I can see that that's a really important change and worthy of discussion, there are some other pieces in here that are new that weren't in the summary and that are not, and that are, may also be worthy of a little bit of discussion. So I guess before I talk about that, I'd just like to say it would be helpful in the future. If we're going to mix old and new language, there, maybe there would be a way of signaling the reader of what all of this is, is, is new and what of it, what of it is old. I, now I have to find where I've got the question. Here we go. 20.5.1, it's, for those of you who are reading, which do I have here? I don't know.
20.5.1, Ms. Page, is that?
The warrant. Yep. On 20.5.1. It says, "No person other than an authorized agent of the town shall break, remove, dig up, or install any pavement, ground, or curbing in or on any public street." I think there are a number of places in town, one of them fairly near where I live, where the resident has done a rather sweet job, it looks a little amateurish, but it's quite sweet, of defining her property line along the road by putting in what I would call maybe cobblestones. And I, I, I'm not quite sure quite what that is. I guess that there must be some sort of a, she's trying to cover up, an uncomfortable line there between where the, where the lawn ends and the, and the pavement begins, or more accurately, where the pavement ends and the lawn doesn't quite begin. And I'd like to know if that sort of thing is, if as residents were free to do that kind of thing or not.
I think in a perfect world, we would like to control what people can put on the public way, although in reality, sometimes people put things without asking.
Any other questions, Ms. Page?
No, I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
Gentlemen, and then...
David Chase, Precinct 3. I think I'm, I hope I'm just quibbling about definitions, but if someone were putting in a pier for a porch, a hole, one foot by one foot by four deep, is that a trench?
Yes, by definition in the statute.
And so they would have to get rolled in with the building for whatever permit they were already getting?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. White?
Joe White, Precinct 4. A couple of questions on money. If you're not going to inspect, you, the town's not going to inspect a trench that, if I hire a contractor to dig something in my backyard, he goes and gets his permit and puts it in his pocket, and that's, it sounds like it's a forgotten thing as far as you people are concerned. So he digs this trench, and I'm unaware that it's unsafe. And something does happen. What's the sense in the permit? That's what, I'll give you two, and then, the other one is the monies. The monies that you get for these permits are going to be used for strictly paperwork or not labor to inspect these trenches?
Answer to the first question, it's not my choice, it's a state regulation. The state regulation says that towns have to issue permits, but there's no duty to inspect unless the town is made aware that there's a hazard. Then there's a duty to inspect and either make it safe or monitor it until it's made safe. That's one, answer to your first question. The answer to your second question is a little more complex, but part of the cost is an administrative fee and part of the cost, at least on the, the street opening permit, which is why I suggested it might be higher, is to pay for some of that inspection. It would go back to the general fund, and I would think offset the cost of the inspector.
My next question would be on the articles of law. If, if I, as a contractor, do my diligence to dig, to get the permit, and I dig this hole, how does the homeowner know what the regulations are? How does anybody know what these regulations are, other than a licensed, hopefully a licensed contractor? If a landscaper comes in to do some excavation in a yard, he's not necessarily up on this. How would this be, how could we get this to them or to the homeowner?
I think that's a good question. The Department of Public Safety, State Department, Mass. Department of Public Safety is struggling with this question as well. I went to a seminar recently that talked about how they're going to try to get the word out, because it is a real issue. It's a real issue for not only making people aware that it's a new state law, as well as enforcing the requirement that people have a permit. I think the simple answer to that, Mr. White, is public education.
Okay. My quick thought...
Both by the town and the state.
Was that there is a law that you can't dig a bush by shovel without, without, or a plant by shovel without calling DigSafe.
There is.
Yes, the DigSafe law has become more protective.
That is Chapter 82, that's Chapter 82 mentioned earlier.
So maybe that would be a way, if you apply for DigSafe, DigSafes have to physically come to your property and do their markings.
Assuming you're, assuming you know the DigSafe law and your homeowner, right?
I think we can solve this issue separately from Town Meeting Floor. You wanted to answer this question? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Gail Valian, Precinct 2. Just regard to 20.4.1, which I understand is new. Would that pertain to putting out rubbish bins, for example?
I'm sorry, could you...
I didn't hear the...
Would that pertain to putting out rubbish bins? Would that pertain to putting out rubbish bins before garbage collections?
Twenty point four point one, Peter.
Well, it says, "No person other than an authorized agent in the town may place or cause to be placed or maintained any permanent or temporary structure, any natural or man-made materials, on any public street, sidewalk, or highway, in such manner," et cetera.
No. The simple answer is no, because the bylaws, which you don't have in front of you, and I do, is Section 20.2 discusses putting out refuse containers and how long they can be out specifically. So I would imagine that twenty point four point one is not connected to that.
You say you imagine, but would it specifically override twenty point two?
Well, I'm not an attorney, but I don't believe so.
Well, neither am I, but-
I don't believe so, since it's mentioned somewhere specifically, somewhere else.
Thank you.
I certainly wouldn't enforce it that way.
Mr. Forenzy, did you have?
Peter, I was just thinking about this as I was sitting there. Angelo Forenzy, Precinct 3, town meeting member. We talked about setting the rates for the trench opening permits, but at the same time, are we allowed to request the contractor's post bonds to be sure they paved the patches correctly after they've gotten that?
Yeah.
So we're not precluded from doing that?
I'll come to that.
Please, Peter.
Yes, part of the regulations will require, and actually the laws also mention this, the state laws, that we require this now, that contractors' utilities require to post a bond, five thousand dollar bond, and statutory insurance, so that we can be sure that they will, in fact, finish the work, and their equipment and vehicles and their work is insured as well.
Is there any other discussion? And we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 18, Christopher Gorm.
Chris Gorm, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5. Article 18, moved that Article 18 be dismissed.
Mr. Curtis, the report of the Warrant Committee?
Well, the Warrant Committee actually unanimously requested dismissal of this article until the next available town meeting. And basically, we already have special legislation passed by the state legislature concerning an OPEB trust fund. This is our changes that have been recommended by town council. The Warrant Committee hasn't really had an opportunity to talk to town council about why we need them. And so we just are, the amount of money at stake is quite small. There's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the OPEB trust fund. So we want to have an opportunity to explore with town council, and we'll take this up in the next annual, the next town meeting in October.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved. Article 21, Kristen Gregson, I believe.
Chris Gregson, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Moved that under Article 21, the reading of the proposed special law be dispensed with the same being set forth in full under Article 21 in the warrant for this meeting, and having been distributed to each town meeting member.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's approved unanimously.
Moved that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to petition the General Court for the enactment of a special law in substantially the form set forth in Article 21 of the warrant for this meeting.
Report from the Warrant Committee.
Unanimously recommends favorable action.
And is somebody, Mr. Reardon, or somebody from else, Mr. Noonan, who would, Mr. Simmons?
Richard D. Simmons, Jr., Assessing Administrator for the Town of Belmont. This is a modification of law that was passed by the town meeting in 2003, April 28th of 2003. The bill was reviewed by the Department of Revenue, and they had passed on some recommendations that made this legislation more in line with other communities that bill quarterly and make us more in line with the legal requirements that are involved with quarterly billing.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 26, Nana Tilke.
Nana Tilke, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Article 26, moved that under Article 26, the reading of the proposed special law be dispensed with the same being set forth in full under Article 26 in the warrant for this meeting, and having been distributed to each town meeting member.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved unanimously. Go ahead, Nana.
Moved that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to petition the General Court for the enactment of a special law in substantially the form set forth in Article 26 of the warrant for this meeting.
Mr. Younger, did you want to? Oh, yes. The Alcohol Licensing Committee, Ms. Scally?
Mary Ann Scally, Precinct 2, a member of the Alcohol Licensing Committee. I'm standing in for Andy Levin, who is the chairman, who was not able to come tonight. This is a petition from the Veterans of Farinwars, who are the VFW, that would like to have a club license. And all the information is in front of you. And what you are doing as members of the town meeting is authorizing the fact that this article will be placed on a ballot question, and the town residents will vote on this.
Thank you. Mr. Younger, did you want to elaborate?
As Mrs. Scally said, that is correct. Additionally, Representative Brownsburg will be filing legislation after, if the town meeting approves this. That's the second step in the process. Very similar to what you had done for the retail licenses and the restaurant licenses. The reason we're doing this is, most communities that recognize Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, that recognize liquor licenses, the Board of Selectmen would have automatically had the authority to grant a veterans' organization a club license. But since Belmont has a Home Rule Petition Act for all their alcohol licenses, even the club licenses, like the retail and restaurant licenses, need to go through this process.
Is there a discussion? Mr. Samuels.
Mr. Moderator, if this is granted, what would the cost of a club license be to the VFW, and what would the cost of a alcohol license be to the VFW, those monies going to the town?
Ms. Scally.
The club license is not like the Belmont Country Club. That is, I believe, four thousand dollars per year. This one is a separate one. In our committee, felt that it would, VFW, I believe, that they wanted to not ask for very much money, so it would be a nominal fee. Now, Mr. Younger?
Thank you, Mrs. Scally. One issue that came up, you had mentioned a club license and alcohol license. That's one and the same. It's not a separate club license and a separate alcohol license, so it's one out license. The Board of Selectmen haven't made the determination yet what the club license fee would be. Their license authority will make that determination if this process comes full circle. Various communities have different license fees. They can be, as they stated, Mrs. Scally said, nominal fee to one that could be, you know, similar to what a restaurant or license would be, but generally, it's somewhere in between.
Gentlemen?
Vincent Stanton, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Has the VFW represented to the town what sort of activities would be conducted if they were able to get this license, and how would those differ from the current activities?
Be careful.
I will say that we were very pleased, our committee was very pleased that they came to ask us for a license. Let's put it that way. By the way, Gianna Salad and Carolyn Bunyan are also members of the committee. I'm sorry, I should have invited them down, in case they want to say something too. They're saying no. Okay.
Mr. Forenzy?
No, but to-
Oh, sorry. Please.
So they asked us, and their main function is to try to raise money, and they feel that they could rent the facility out and have a sale of alcohol, and that would help them try to raise the money. And that's what they're trying to do. This is a separate club license. This is not a country club. And by the way, the Belmont Country Club is the only one in town that would have one like that, because you also have to have an eighteen-hole golf course.
Mr. Forenzy?
A couple of, Angelo Forenzy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, a couple of points of clarification. As I think most people are aware, the town has been working with the VFW to try and negotiate a continuation of the land lease. The situation there is that the VFW owns the building, the town owns the land on which the building sits. Currently, there is no lease on that building. We have been going back and forth. We have agreed to enter into a lease arrangement with the VFW contingent on certain things. One, that they can demonstrate that they have the financial wherewithal to maintain the insurance, maintain the building, and so forth. And one of the conditions of the lease is that all activities that take care of that, that take place in that building have to be consistent with local, state, and federal law. So that's, again, one of the reasons we're having this discussion.
Mr. White.
Joe White, Precinct 4. I see a club, and I assume that's the definition by the quote, means that the group may only serve alcohol on the premises to its own members and guests accompanying them. So if they were to rent that hall, would one veteran have to stand there and swear that all these are his guests? Or is he allowed to do multiples?
Mr. Forenzy?
Angelo Forenzy, Precinct 3. You're correct, Mr. White. If they were to rent the hall to another group, that group would have to apply for the one-day license, which is available to various organizations when they rent the hall. So the situation that the VFW was thinking about is they're thinking about having events themselves, sponsoring spaghetti dinners or things like that, events of that nature, where they would have guests there, which they would be able to serve a glass of wine with.
I'm just worried about the members and guests accompanying them. So, in other words, if I know you're a veteran, and you're going to be there, and I choose to join you, and you leave the place, am I now a guest of somebody else's?
It depends on, you know, it depends on how the rule, yeah. I mean, I mean, there's a certain amount of flexibility. But for example, you couldn't just walk in off the street and have a beer. I mean, that's not the intention, all right? You walk in off the street and say, "Do I know somebody here? Can I be your guest to have a beer?" That's, you know.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Younger?
Mr. White, that is actually the legal definition of the statute. That is not the Board of Selectmen or Licensing Committee putting their own language into it. That's how this law states.
You clarified the difference between the two. I understand that this is, this is maybe a nightly thing for some people, and then a separate event, well, not nightly, okay, one night a week. And the other is, if they were to rent the hall to a group, that group would have to petition, and they would tell them that.
Right. Right. That's specifically by the statute. It is club members and guests. That's out of the statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Scally, did you?
Again, all this discussion is very useful, and all your questions are very valid, and we, the committee, have asked the same things and got the same answers. But before you tonight is for you to give the authority so that it can go on a ballot question and let the citizens of the town vote for whether they want it or not.
Any other discussion? Gentlemen?
Brian Saper, Precinct 6. Does the one-day license option currently exist? And there's a fee?
Absolutely. It took us a while, but we did get it, and it's a wonderful thing to have. It protects every church, any organization. They have a one-day license, and if anything happens, God forbid, the insurance is, they're covered. It's mostly insurance protection.
So the VFW could use that now for its functions?
Yes, they could.
Other discussion? And we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The article's approved. Article 27, Nathaniel Rono.
Nathaniel Rono, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. Article 27, moved that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, and to accept on behalf of the town for a public water utility line or lines, and easement interest or interests in all or a portion of the parcels of land generally shown on a sketch plan entitled Water Line Easement, consisting of eleven sheets dated August 13th, 2003, prepared by Design Consultants Incorporated, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall determine to be appropriate, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is further authorized to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out these acquisitions.
Thank you. Mr. Clancy, do you want to, or?
Do you want our report?
Oh, I apologize. I do. Warrant Committee report?
The Warrant Committee unanimously recommends favorable action, and I'm informed that even though they weren't, never mind. Okay. Warrant Committee's done. We recommended favorable action unanimously.
Mr. Clancy?
Mr. Moderator, Glenn Clancy, Director of Committee Development. All of the water mains that were installed at the McLean Hospital property, whether for the hospital itself or for the developments that occurred at the site, were all supposed to be maintained in perpetuity by the Town of Belmont, unlike all the other utilities on the site, which were going to remain privately owned. Part of the agreements that were executed in the late 1990s said that easements were to be in place to protect the Town of Belmont Water Department in the future, and allow them access to these water mains. It was our understanding that the easement wording was included in the documents that were filed with the registry as part of the protected open space on the site. In fact, when those documents were reviewed recently by town council, we weren't comfortable that the wording actually covered the easements for the water mains up at the site. And so this is really just a measure to protect the Town of Belmont Water Department going forward to make sure that we have the easements in place to allow the maintenance to occur, should it be necessary.
Is there a discussion? Mr. Paulson?
Fred Paulson, Precinct 1. I'm assuming that's at no cost to the town?
That is correct.
Mr. White.
Joe White, Precinct 4. Is McLean aware of what we're doing, and are they, is there no opposition?
Yeah, McLean is aware. In fact, it was at McLean's request that we iron this out to make sure that the water department was comfortable with the arrangement before they move forward with any agreements they enter into with their developers.
Save me a walk if you'd said that. Thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's approved unanimously. Article 25, Mr. Forenzy. Mr. Forenzy?
Angelo Forenzy, town meeting member, precinct three. Moved that the town establish a special purpose stabilization fund pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 5B of the Massachusetts General Laws for the purpose of road, street, sidewalk, capital projects, and maintenance, and to raise the appropriate, raise and appropriate the sum of $2.5 million for said fund, and that these actions be subject to the approval of same by the voters in a subsequent special election.
The warrant committee?
Warrant committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
And the capital budget?
Capital budget committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Mr. Forenzy?
Mr. Moderator, this motion is to create a special purpose stabilization fund to which members, to which money from the upcoming proposition two-and-a-half levy override referendum, if passed, would be deposited for each year the money is raised. The money from this fund can only be used for the purposes for which it is earmarked, that is, for which the stabilization was created, was created, and in this case, roads, or, as I mentioned, sidewalk and other capital projects. The appropriation is subject to annual review, and in each future year, the Board of Selectmen must decide to use the additional taxing capacity for the same purpose. If in future years the Board of Selectmen elects not to use any or all of the additional tax capacity for allocation to the fund, they may elect to do so. However, once done, any reduction is permanent. Use of the monies from the stabilization fund must still be appropriated each year during the budget process and voted on by town meeting. So, essentially, if the override passes, we're committing to putting the $2.5 million from that override into the stabilization fund that authorize, we will have authorization to exceed our tax limit by the amount of $2.5 million, which we can then use and appropriate to the stabilization fund. If we decide not to put the money in the stabilization fund, essentially, we cannot raise it. If we make the decision not to raise it, whatever amount we reduce, or whatever amount we do not raise, becomes permanent. We're no longer allowed to raise that in the future. So, it's an unlikely case where, if this override should pass, that we're not going to use, go for the $2.5 million. But if something should happen in the future, it's an annual review, so we always have a chance to continue to look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Forenzy. Is there discussion of this article? Mr. Samuels, let me say something here. In terms of my comment earlier about scope, the Selectmen have voted to put this question on the ballot, so it will appear on the ballot. That's not our focus tonight in terms of this article. It's rather the establishment of this fund if the ballot question passes. So, I just wanted to remind town meeting of that. Mr. Samuels?
Mr. Moderator, if we vote this in tonight, this fund would be created if the override passes.
That's correct.
So, is it appropriate to ask a question about the override? And my question would be, how much roadwork would $2.5 million buy in the Town of Belmont?
Yeah, that's certainly an appropriate question. Yes.
Is it an appropriate question?
Yes, it is certainly an appropriate question.
Thank you.
Let me expand on that, and this will get out as we start talking about the override question itself. As you remember, we've already committed $1 million a year in a previous override to roads. So, this $2.5 million plus the one that's already, the $1 million that's already been committed will be spent on roads each year. So, it'll be $3.5 million plus the 2.5% that we've spent from year to year. The estimate is, at that rate, which is about the maximum rate at which we can expend the money, it will take us about 25 years, all right, to get to an acceptable road condition, a road condition index of 65, Glenn, is that the number? 65, on all roads in Belmont. So, you know, the total cost, if we were to go out there and try and fix all the roads all at once, the total cost to do that in today's dollars is about 80, 85 million dollars.
Thank you.
Ms. Hildenberg?
Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure you're going to allow my question. Joanna Hildenberg, precinct six. I'd like to know from the town clerk what the approximate cost of a special election like this is.
About $14,000.
About $14,000 is the answer.
Yeah. It's a little frustrating that we can't save $14,000 by having this override, having had this question beyond the ballot, which we just had, where there was such a little turnout anyway. Having been on the warrant committee for so many years, it always frustrated me when we, when we spend money on special elections to, you know, for overrides, debt exclusions, that kind of thing, when they can easily be incorporated and part of the already budgeted elections that we have in the spring.
Mr. Forenzy, I'll let you respond to that, but then I am going to, I do think we're straying beyond the scope of the article, but I think you shouldn't answer that.
I share your frustration. We worked very hard to try and get this override in at the annual town election. The problem was, we did not have the budget numbers together, and we did not have a, an acceptable budget negotiation between the school committee and the warrant committee and the town at that point. And there was concern that if we put the override election on, the override election on at the special election without the full support of all the participants in the town, that it was doomed to failure, and it was, there's no sense in doing it. So, we sort of had our back against the wall, and we're forced to go to a special election. But that was certainly nobody's desire, but that was just the process.
Is there fur...
Thank you for allowing my question, Mr. Moderator.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Tim Bowman, town meeting member, precinct five. If we were to vote against this this evening, and the override were to pass, what would happen then?
We'd have another town meeting and try to vote on it again, because the override is contingent on putting the money in a stabilization fund.
So, in essence, if we were to vote against this tonight, it might be a message that we don't think this is the appropriate override.
No.
No, no.
Certainly.
That's not the way I would interpret it.
Again, I don't think we're voting on the override. I think the motion is clear as to what we are in fact considering.
The override should stand on its own.
Yes, Ms. Page.
Mr. Moderator, Jennifer Page, precinct three. You allowed a question from Mrs. Joanna Hildenberg about the cost of the election, and I'd like to follow up with another question about that.
I really think that, I'm trying to be generous, I really think the cost of the election, you're talking about the cost of the election?
Well, I'll tell you what my question is, then you can tell me if you can allow it.
Sure, go ahead.
The question is, would it be legal to put this question on the ballot in November, when we will have probably pretty good turnout?
The, I think that's beyond the scope of the article tonight. It's already been voted by the Selectmen. It's June 9, I believe.
Yes.
I can think of ways to spend that $14,000.
Sure.
William Green, precinct seven. You mentioned, so this, I thought we were voting here about the $2.5 million in stabilization fund, but you mentioned there's already a million dollars from a prior override. Is that money in the general operating budget right now, or is that in the stabilization fund?
It's in the, it's actually in the capital budget. It's money that's been set aside out of the capital budget, and the capital budget committee is committed to continuing to fund the overrides, I mean, the roadwork with that money.
And you would be voting on that million dollar plus a small amount in Article 10?
Okay, so, but what I heard you say was that your plan was to take the $2.5 million from the override, plus that $1 million, and throw it all into the Road Stabilization Fund?
That's correct.
Would that...
No.
No, I'm not in the stabilization, I'm sorry, no. The road, the $3.5 million that would be spent on, that would be spent for roads would be $2.5 million for the stabilization fund and $1 million from the capital budget.
Okay.
Other discussion question? Hearing none, all, we'll vote, all those, oh, I'm sorry, is there one? Mr. Paulson?
Fred Paulson, precinct one. Mr. Moderator, I assume that from your early statements that the Board of Selectmen are unanimously in favor of this motion.
That's correct.
And in terms of raising the question of the override, which I think is relevant because this came out as part of a three-part type program, where there'd be one other operating override, and also a capital budget debt exclusion for the Wellington School, then I think it's important for the public and for the town meeting members to understand that the various committees of the town, the warrant committee, and I would hope that the Selectmen are supporting these three parts. And I would like to have a response from the Selectmen.
I will, we'll be covering some of this in the, in the budget article, and Mr. Curtis will be talking about that. I'm not sure it's relevant under, in fact, I don't really think it's relevant under this article unless, I mean, if you want to make a brief statement, Mr. Forenzy, I'll allow it, but I think we are straying beyond the purpose of this.
Yeah, I'll be happy to. I seem to be getting that question a lot lately, and there seems to be a lot of confusion. I am not willing to commit to any override I know nothing about, all right? I believe that there is a need for overrides. I'm not sure the override that I'm prepared to vote for is the same override that gets presented. So, I can't answer the question until I know what it is that I'm going to be voting on.
Mr. Jones, and then Mr. Clair, I guess, since, let each of you get it correct.
Yes, Ralph Jones, precinct two, and also a member of the warrant committee. I think this question, which has been raised, is beginning to muddy the waters about what the real issue is here. I think that we're now at a point where I think a large percentage of the elected representatives of this town have come together and are willing to join together to get all of the referenda that has been, have been addressed, passed. And I don't think that continuing to ask Mr. Forenzy questions about his position is going to help that. I'd like to announce in respect to this that there was an organization created called Roads Now, being chaired by Paul Solomon, co-chaired by Graham Allison, as a treasurer, Mark Pallillo. Members include members of the school committee, members of the warrant committee, members of the Board of Selectmen. We are all unanimous in supporting all of these, and we would like the town to come together at this point and say, yes, we can do this, not try to divide the town into one part or another. It's time for us to come together and get this done.
Mr. Leclair, and then I'm going to cease discussion of this particular point.
Dan Leclair, town meeting member at large. I want to stand here before you and assure you that the enthusiasm I have for the roads override is the similar enthusiasm I have for making sure that the Wellington School is built, and I fully trust that we have the appropriate expertise in our community and committees who understand buildings, will be sure that the money will be well-spent and not be wasted. Similarly, I think it's no mystery, if those of you who've studied what's going on in our budget, that we do have a permanent structural budget deficit. It's not going to go away. It's very high, it's highly likely that in the spring of '09, we're going to need some kind of operating expense override. What I'm committed to is not a specific number at the moment. What I'm committed to is the principle that underlies the need for the override, which is a commitment to maintaining level of services in our community. I have heard no mandate anywhere I go that people want to reduce services. I have not heard that. There's no groundswell for that. Therefore, I will support whatever operating expense override is necessary in the spring to maintain reasonable level of services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. As I said, there will also, you will hear some, Mr. Curtis, the chair of the warrant committee, will also be talking about the operating picture in his presentation under Article 4. Any other discussion on this motion? Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The article's approved by more than a two-thirds vote. Article 9. Bob McLaughlin.
Mr. Moderator, Bob McLaughlin, precinct two. Two motions. First motion, moved that under Article 9, the reading of the amendments to the Position Clarification and Compensation Plan as set forth in a document entitled Proposed Position Classification and Compensation Plan be dispensed with in the original having been filed in the town clerk's office.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved unanimously. Go ahead, Bob.
Next motion, moved that the town amend the Position Clarification and Compensation Plan previously adopted under the provisions of Article 11 of the general bylaws of the town by adopting the amendments to the plan as set forth in a document entitled Proposed Position Classification and Compensation Plan on file in the town clerk's office.
Warrant committee?
Warrant committee unanimously recommends favorable action.
Ms. Jenkins, do you want to make a brief? Brief description of this article, please. And I believe that everybody has copies, or they're available, of the classification plan.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Diane Krimmons. I'm the Human Resource Director for the town. And basically, just to give a little overview, a little more than once on the screen, is that, this is a typical article. It comes up every year. The town has what's called a paying classification plan. The classification plan is a framework that sets a hierarchy of the various jobs within the town. It was performed by a consultant about six or seven years ago. This year, it is amended. We're actually kind of happy to present you with the FY09 version. If you haven't received that, there are some copies on the stage. Excuse me. And it sets, sets the positions up into grades, so then again, we have a hierarchy of jobs within the town. And then there is a salary range set to the positions. About 90% of these positions within the town, when I say, as far as the employee groups go, are unionized. The percentages have been bargained, the movement in their ranges at 3.5% for FY09. The town uses that same movement for the 15% of the rest of our population of employees that are non-unionized. So, basically, again, it's a, it's a standard article that comes up every year.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of this article? Yes, Ms. Bass?
Sue Bass, precinct three. I just want to, I'm glad, you said that this is, you're doing it for FY09, and I welcome that, because in the past, we've done it retroactively, and that's not so good. It's not really clear exactly what's new here. Is it just that, I mean, have, have positions been changed in their classification, or is it just that, you know, the salary ranges are up 3.5%, as it says in most cases?
Well, basically, to answer your question, because it's going forward, I don't know what's going to happen yet in FY09 for anything that's been classified, that might be brought forward to be, to be changed. Certainly, and the reason we're able to go forward this year, again, is that we have multiple-year contract settlements with the unions. So, next year, I would know already what, what would be coming up. But for the past year, there were only three changes to the classification plan.
And what were those?
Sure, I'd be happy to tell you. There were two, my own position and that of the town accountant, were upgraded. That was following additional job duties that were added. And then the community development director's position was upgraded because he took on additional duties of an assistance position that was eliminated.
I see. Thank you. I think that's, that's useful to know. They went up, what, one grade or two grades, or?
I believe, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I think they went up two grades.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Joe White, precinct four. I see that you were, kudos to getting everybody to agree exactly the same increase. Does this include all the benefits, or, I guess, better asked, is this just wages, or this does include all?
You mean the ranges, the salary ranges?
Well, you've got a 3.5% raise from each, each one of these groups.
Right.
Are there other benefits that are increases? Are they included in this?
No.
Well, this article only pertains to setting up the, the framework, the structure of the job hierarchies, and then the pay ranges. It doesn't have anything to do with benefits like health insurance and so forth, if that's what you're asking.
I think what I'm asking, yeah, I am, I'm asking if we're giving these people 3.5% of these... percent of these wages that are indicated.
Yes.
That's our cost. If we're giving them more than that in some other way, that's more than our cost or less than our cost.
Well, again, this article only deals with the wages and the classification.
This is a compensation plan, has nothing to do with benefits.
Okay, that's what I want to, thank you.
Any other? Mr. Mercy?
Donald Mercy, Precinct Eight. Is there any effort between these, the town and the school department to try to bring some of these jobs together so we don't have to have two people doing the same job? One of them might be your own job rather than having two Human Resource Directors. That may not be viable, but there is plenty of jobs between the two sections of the town, I'll use them sections, that's what it is, to come under one umbrella so we're not duplicating services. One of them is the building.
I think the appropriate time to bring this up would be under the budget discussion, not under this article.
Okay, we will do it. Thank you.
Ms. Bass?
Jennifer Page.
Paige, sorry. Sorry, Jennifer.
Looking around for Sue, wondered where she was. Jennifer Page, Precinct Three.
Transformed here, yeah.
If I had my druthers, I would give our town employers, employees someplace between five and eight percent. But we live under a state cap and it's not Proposition 3.5 percent. It's 2.5 percent. And I'm wondering if any of the Selectmen or Warrant Committee members could talk about what is the, what is the impact of sort of across-the-board raises that are more than we bring in?
Mr. Jones?
Ralph Jones, Precinct Two, and also a Town Meeting Member. These, as Diane Crimmins has said, are negotiated ranges, already negotiated with bargaining units in the town and that's where the basic number has come from. And I think, Jennifer, you're absolutely correct. We have been talking about this for years. We are basically operating under a situation where our revenues increased by two-and-a-half percent, but our salaries increased by more than that. The goods and services we buy and purchase increased by more than that, sometimes a lot more, for example, fuel, oil, electricity, and water. So, it's a fundamental structural dilemma in our financing of our town that has been described here many, many times, but I don't think should dictate what the outcome of the labor relations process is. That's something that needs to be negotiated with our employees.
Mr. Forenzy?